So before we get in, we have a full day of work ahead. So hopefully everyone's had their coffee. But it's appropriate to spend an ample part of our time this morning just to celebrate our incredible Board Chair, Madam Chair Dana Dillon this morning. And so we have a couple of things planned for you.
Oh God, there's no video.
There's complete video. You're being webcast right now to the entire world. This is sent out globally. So, but we have a couple of things going on.
Social media.
We have a couple of things planned and so I'll kind of navigate and Jack and I will sort of navigate us through this morning. But, you know, we had a lovely reception last night. So many of you have heard remarks from last night. So like we said, it's all Dana, all day today. But we just wanted to take some time to celebrate. As I've mentioned before, the Board elected me Chair. I guess that was in the spring. And I've been serving as Chair on July 1st. And even today is a perfect example, like how did you do this for so long? It's like there are so many moving parts and so many things going on and to navigate and do that with such grace and humor and professionalism. This morning is a perfect example of like, wow Dana, these are shoes to fill and you've just done it with so much grace and thoughtfulness. And so we want to celebrate Dana this morning and so we're going to do that. So bear with us, there's plenty of Kleenex and lifesavers going on over here. So she's got the equipment she needs. Jack, did you want to, did you have anything?
I'm going to join you a little bit later with the staff presentation. I think we're going to kick it off with a video, if we could.
This is your life Dana Dillon.
Yeah.
For me, now when I'm in the classroom and in the future when I retire.
Dana, Dana, Dana. You know, down in our lobby, we have a list of all the trustees that have served on our Board over the years. And there's been many and many have done a good job. But there's only a few that have really made the difference and moved this system to another level. And you are absolutely at the top of that list.
Dana's voice has been heard by many, many people and respected because she is that straight talker.
What's interesting about Dana is she really became that voice of the teacher.
She is a very real person and she speaks the truth.
I hope I can carry on Dana's graciousness and straightforwardness.
It may not be what people would like to hear.
She's not going to give you a line. She's going to talk to you straight.
But she speaks it because it comes from here.
You have taught me so much about how to be a good Board Leader.
With your determination, your focus, your leadership, this system is now on solid financial footing.
I think of Dana, I think of a tremendous trustee.
Everybody's family to Dana and you can always count on a hug and a smile when you see Dana.
She gave me the big hug that she normally does and you know that laugh.
She gives good hugs.
You're just the most unique person.
Everyone, thousands of people, really owe their gratitude to you for all the work you've done here.
She's very authentic, very authentic.
Someone who never forgets who we serve at CalSTRS.
I don't think it would surprise anybody how nice and wonderful she is to everyone that she meets.
Dana has a big heart. And it can be a tough heart at times, but for the most part, it's a very sensitive heart.
She's a very dedicated person to whatever the cause is that she sets out to. She's a very brilliant person.
She wasn't afraid to be pushy. She wasn't afraid to disagree.
She's well-respected, not only here at STURS and in the teaching community, but across the nation.
She is not afraid to cry.
Tears are not a sign of weakness.
And that is a tremendous sign of power.
They're a sign of connecting with the people.
Dana, I wish you all retirement and hope the boxes all get emptied that you've been waiting in retirement to do.
You've touched my life and my family life in ways that's beyond belief.
I hope that you enjoy your retirement. Nobody deserves it more than you.
Dana, you have always been a role model for me.
We love you and we'll be missing you and all the great work that you've done.
Whether you know it or not, you're a role model for a lot of people.
Thank you for all that you've done for CalSTRS, teachers in California, retirees in California.
Dana, you'll be missed.
And thank you again for all your work on the Board. You've just been absolutely terrific. Have a great retirement Dana.
And with that, Betty has a little resolution she'd like to share with you. Betty? Do I have? I don't see having control over.
There you go.
I got it. Okay, sorry Betty, here we go. Go ahead.
Thank you Sharon. I just wanted to also just add my expression of tribute and congratulations to Dana and certainly on behalf of the State Controller's Office and my team, Karen and Lynn. But really what you have meant to certainly this institution of CalSTRS, to our members, and I think it was all expressed in the video in terms of what you bring to this role that you have served so honorably for the last 16 years. It is about never losing sight of who we're serving. And so at every turn, your really compassionate and emotional embrace of our members. And what I really appreciate about you is how much I've learned from you and your level-headed analysis and evaluation of issues. You know, a lot of us come here, and particularly when we're new, don't have a lot of institutional knowledge. And you just have to spend some time with Dana and you get that pretty quickly. She just cuts to the chase and knows really where a lot of that history has been and I just so value that. Your inclusive nature as a leader on this Board. I sit on a lot of Boards and this is one that I thoroughly enjoy coming to, fully participating in, because that is welcome and that is really a sign of your leadership. And your just respect for your colleagues and how you're just so diligent. I'm so just pleased. You set the tone for, you know, really the whole tenor of this Board and I hope the members and anyone really viewing what happens here every time we get together as a Board. That tone is set from the top and now has been, you know, passed on to, I mean obviously Harry and Sharon, this is who we are as a Board. And I think the collegiality of this Board can't be understated. That is a tone that you have set and we're just so grateful. And just to call you a friend, to call you a friend. It is not often where you get to serve and you leave a Board thinking, yes, we've gotten some business done, but you leave also feeling just a very, very special connection with the people with whom you've done this work. And so Dana, congratulations and just really an exemplary record of public service and also with the California Teachers Association. We will miss you and I'm sure that, I know for me personally, I'm going to up my Commander Roberts Rules of Order.
Yeah, as we all need to apparently.
Thank you. Congratulations to me Jeff. Have a small token.
Great. And just so you know, the Board will have a chance, we're going to kind of round things out at the end with Board comments to Dana, but we're going to move towards Jack, Jack and staff. And Jack has a presentation.
Come on up.
And then we'll have CTA and other members of the public and then the Board will have a chance to say final remarks and then we'll move on.
Do you need a break or you need to? Where do you go?
Oh my God, you put that together.
Of course.
From the picture loss.
Yes. But as you can see, we've got a wonderful bunch of notes here from people that work here in the organization. And there's two things that are really evident when you look at this from a distance. One is we ran out of space. And truly, if we had made this three times, 10 times bigger, we could have filled this up with comments because you've had that many connections in the building and everything. So, you know, sometimes you struggle doing these things. We need people to sign this thing. Come on, let's go. Not here. It's absolutely filled up because people wanted to tell you what they think. The other thing I think you'll notice, if you've ever signed cards and things, you know, it says, oh, have a happy day, have a happy retirement.
Have a good summer.
You know, but that's not what's on here.
No.
This is actually, you know, paragraphs of people talking about you which show that these aren't superficial relationships to you. I mean, it's easy to say nice things to people as a courtesy, but that's not what this is. It's not a courtesy. It's actually because you made that connection to that many people in the organization and they wanted to say these things to you about that relationship.
Wow.
So it's really, it's very symbolic, I think, to how you've affected the whole membership. So I hope you'll feel that from us, that everyone feels you really made this organization whole in all that you've done here. So thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I think we have Joe, Joe Bartel from CTA, come on up and have a chance to say a few remarks.
So, welcome. Thank you for, you know, all the years of dedication you've given. I know Toby couldn't be here personally today, but I bring from them, from Toby, from the officers in the organization, our heartfelt thanks and congratulations on your retirement. I know personally, you've been, you've been a friend, you've been a mentor through my whole first year as a Board Member and dealing with how to handle the STURS stuff and everything. It was amazing. And the countless number of lives that you have touched, both as educators and students, it'll leave a lasting impression upon all the institutions that you've been a part of, especially as a CTA Board Member at CalSTRS. You've always been a steadfast advocate for educators and students and children. There's no amount of words that can thank you and express the amount of gratitude that we all owe you for everything you've done and all your roles that you have held. I can echo all the same things that have been said, your heart, your carry-ness, your big hugs, I mean, it's just, the list goes on. You are truly a remarkable person and you have a lot of admirable qualities that I hope to emulate one day. And I think everyone in this room and everyone that you've had the opportunity to touch their lives also wishes that they could emulate. You've always put the goodwill and care of others first and foremost in everything that you've done. And like I said, we can only, we can only say what we can, but know that the emotion behind the words that everyone is saying is greater than any vocabulary could ever express. So on behalf of myself, behalf of the California Teachers Association, again, we thank you for everything you've done. We applaud you for all of the accomplishments and everything that you've helped bring forth for this state, for educators and for students. And we wish you nothing but the best as you ride off into the sunset. Thank you.
And a big asterisk. So it's an invitation for other members of the public who want to say a few remarks to Dana. You're welcome to come on up to the mics. So might be able to start over here.
Hey Folia, CTA NEA retired. You know, it's been a long journey. And we started out in the late 80s. And from that very first day, first of all, I was impressed that you were from Weed.
Everyone has.
And from the very first day that we've met, your heart has always been, what can I do for our members? And I don't know if many of you know, but Dana was on our Board of Directors of CTA for eight years, no, nine years, nine years. And in that nine years, she represented the largest district within the California Teachers Association. A district that went from Siskiyou, Alturas, all the way down to Yolo, across to Lake Tahoe. All the way around, down to Calaveras. I mean, she was there. And the thing is, when you represent members in the outlying areas, their issues are very, very deep because we don't have the resources that the urban areas have. And she was a role model for our members in total Northern California. And when she spoke at the Board meeting, I've never remember you ever losing your cool. And there were times when you should have.
There probably were times I did.
And you became a role model that many, many of our members want to emulate and want to see you continue to be involved in our association because you have so much to give. And it's never, I've never heard, what is it in it for me? And in today's climate, that seems to be more what leadership is. What is it in for me? I've never heard you say that. And I've never heard you say, well, I'm in Weed, you know, it's too hard to get to an airport, I can't do this, you know. You're always there. And you've always been there. And then when I was able to become a liaison from the teachers, I knew that even though we didn't have a representative on the Board for seven years, you represented our interest. You took, you would sit down with me and say, okay, let's talk about this. And that kind of input and caring is unfortunately somewhat unique. But I hope that your colleagues and also your colleagues that you're retiring from will continue to follow in your footsteps and speak out for those that have no voice, that need a voice. And for you, you have been there for, you know, I hate to say it, no, I'm not going to say it, I'll say it. You know, it's like a love affair because you are just great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Dana, Jim Mahoney, CalRTA. How could you follow Ed? That's tough. Okay, I'll take the heat and then. From the minute I came into this boardroom and you were running a meeting, you introduced yourself to me, I introduced myself to you, gave me a big smile, a great firm handshake, and you made me feel a part of this family. This family that has one goal, to improve the quality of life for the retirees. You made me feel comfortable. You made me feel like I belonged. Outstanding attitude, outstanding atmosphere you put in me. And now that I'm a lot more active and I'm going out to see our retirees, you've got that same attitude. Go get them, they're all yours, go get them. But on behalf of CalRTA and our membership, I want to thank you for what you've done. Thank you for welcoming me, making me, now I'm an acolyte, now I'm going to follow what you say. Go on out and get them. You have improved the quality of life of the retirees in the state of California and there's not much more that anyone could ask for. Thank you very much.
Oh, okay.
All right, it was many years ago and the CTA meeting was over on a Sunday afternoon and I'm at the parking lot and there's a two-stall bathroom, restroom, and I go in and there's this woman taking off a dress. I can't stand this. I'm a woman from Weed, California, and I don't wear dresses, I wear pants.
This is all a webcast.
So it was Dana Dillon, a Weed, California girl. My next story. I'm standing, it was on a Saturday afternoon after the Retirement Committee of CTA. And we're in Vince Cartezzi's room, which had wine and beer, and you and I are drinking a glass of wine. And I said, Dana, we're having an election at the next meeting, why don't you run for Vice Chair? Dana answers and says, I'm too young. I said, that's what we need. She ran for Vice Chair of the Retirement Committee and kept moving up and then moving on. Now a personal story. I had a stroke eight years ago. Dana wants to come see me, I'm at home now, and she had Sue Cirillo pick her up at the airport, come to our house. And of course, my daughter Mary and Dana have been buddies for many years. And Mary, it's time, you have to feed them, you know, they've been drinking wine. And you have to feed anybody at my house. And it was an Italian takeout and they're having plenty of red wine. I'm long gone back into the medical room. I mean, this is all told to me. So now it's time for Dana to get to the Bonaventure Hotel. Well, Sue Cirillo lives many miles to the west of my house and the Bonaventures many miles to the left. And my daughter Mary says, hmm. She calls her sister, are you working downtown tonight? Yes. Sister comes out to pick up Dana in a CHP Cruiser. And takes Dana in the front seat. Dana makes sure you know it was the front because if you're in the back, you're handcuffed. And Kathleen, you know, the CHP Cruiser, takes Dana to the Bonaventure and the bellman wonders what's happening here. She hops out of the front seat, all the luggage in the back, and you know Dana travels with light luggage.
Yeah.
And he gets it out and Dana walks on in to the Bonaventure, out of the CHP Cruiser, and that story goes on and on. I could go on with good stories about Dana. She couldn't be any better. She came out of the classroom, elementary teacher, representing us. I will say it was a stupendous representation. You have been here 20 years Dana, and many years before that I've known you. And you have been someone that any elementary teacher is more than proud of. That's it.
I love you Dana.
I would be remiss if I didn't stand before you today and thank you for all the years of service that you have provided. When I first came on the CTA Board, you were there in the late 90s. And I've just turned out of that position. So you know we've had a long go. We've gone through the emotional, shall I say, emotional touts of menopause together. And I want you to know that you have, if more people in America were like you, the color line would not exist. And I want to tell you that I appreciate your inclusiveness, truly inclusiveness, and I want to thank you for all that you have done for teachers, of which I am one. And I just thank you so much. You're so wise and you have so much wisdom and you are a blessing to me. And I just want you to know that.
Hi, I'm Dave Devini and in Association of California School Administrators, we have a motto. And our motto is leadership matters. And no one exemplifies that better than Dana. She leads, she's always prepared, she's always in tune with what's going on, and she does it with a good sense of humor. And we all love your leadership and we respect it and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Dave.
Good morning Dana. I'm Mike Patterson, CTA Board of Directors District D. And I had the distinct honor of following Dana onto the CTA Board, not replacing Dana because Dana is irreplaceable. But for the last four years I've been on the Board and I cannot go into a staff room without several people in that room saying, where's Dana? How's Dana doing? Say hi to Dana. I mean, it's just amazing. And as Ed mentioned, in District D, it's the best part of California. We have almost 200 of the 1,000 local associations in CTA, just because we divide our Board seats up by number of members and not by geographic area. And I remember my first month on the Board, I was driving somewhere late at night, I probably left the meeting at nine o'clock at night, and I called Dana. And I said, how the, did you do this job and do STRS at the same time? Because being on the Board of Directors is a full-time job and I know being on CalSTRS is. Dana and I talked to me for two and a half hours as I drove home to South Lake Tahoe. She is wonderful. She is a great mentor to so many of us, the students, the teachers, members of STRS. We are so all thankful for everything you've done for us and we will never forget you. And you actually got me in the STURS building twice, last night and today, for the first time in my life, even though I represent Yolo County. So Dana, thank you so much. You mean the world to me. I love you and I will continue to see you. Thank you.
Thanks Mike.
I'm Doug Orr from California Federation of Teachers and I don't want to repeat everything that everybody else has been saying, that you're a wonderful person, which you are and all of that, and that you welcomed me and helped me get used to the idea of coming up here. But I just wanted to bring up one thing that nobody else has brought up so far, and that is the fact that believe it or not, sometimes these meetings can be quite contentious.
Never.
It's always not smooth. And one of the things that I've always loved about you Dana, is no matter how contentious the meeting gets, you're always the even keel. You never dig in, you heel, you listen to everybody's side, you make everybody feel like their arguments were worthwhile, and then you help calm the Board down sometimes so that everybody can get to a decision. And I think that's a skill that not everybody has. And I think it's helped the Board a lot.
Thank you Doug. Peter?
I'm Peter Morse, I'm the Retirement Chair for FAC, the Faculty Association of California Community Colleges. And I just wanted to say that we've always felt that we've had a representative. It doesn't matter whether people are K-12, community college, we're all teachers and we all appreciate you and all the many, many years you've given as service to the state and to all the teachers. So thank you so much.
Thank you Peter.
Good morning, I'm Susie Chow from UTLAR and I'm also CTA R. And the one thing that I wanted to say is that after all the good things that you've all said about Dana, all her skills and all of her knowledge, I am going to get a part of that because I confirmed it with her yesterday. She's going to continue to work with Ed and myself and some other Cadres on our CalSTRS Retirement Cadre. Yay! So thank you Dana. I look forward to having you mentor me and I look forward to working with you. I don't really know her that well, but I know her as a sister.
We will though.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks Susan.
Awesome, thanks.
Hey Jess.
Good morning, my friend Jennifer Baker, and I'm representing myself today. I know, I wanted to thank you as a woman. It's a very difficult job to do what you do. We have had so many difficult moments, challenges over the years. And I wanted to commend you for your vulnerability because it's your biggest strength and that's why people love you. You have taken this Board through a tremendous journey over one of the most complicated fiscal crises that the state has faced. And you have helped to take this whole system into a future where all of the teachers can have a secure...
have a secure retirement. That is huge. That's not only having an impact on teachers in this state, but it's also showing other states a vision that they can achieve to ensure that teachers can have a defined benefit pension. And that is absolutely tremendous. And as a woman, you have helped to advocate, to bring strength to other women by supporting more access for women and women of color and men of color on boards. And you have always tried to advance the cause. And that's a very difficult journey because it often feels lonely and you're surrounded by some wonderful colleagues that are doing the same. But I wanted to thank you for what you've done because you're helping me, you're helping my daughter, and you're helping the billions of other women around the world by setting an example. So on behalf of myself and the so many women, I wanted to thank you for your leadership, your vulnerability and your strength.
Thanks. John.
John Anderson, CTA rep and teacher. Now, I have to follow that. Jennifer Baker, that's a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. It's a beautiful audience here. So I'm going to even look at some notes here so I don't forget anything I want to say. When you have a beautiful audience, you have to, you know, be really good.
There you go.
Dana, first, thank you, though, for being a great teacher and all the impact you've had on your kids back at your school. I mean, that's first and foremost. I think in our lives, you love this profession. We know that and I thank you for that. So I've worked with Dana in many capacities in Retirement Committee at CTA and through, obviously, here at CalSTRS. And also Dana and I have had some lobby trips together. We've been to Washington DC together, fighting the fight to repeal the GPO and the WEP. So that was really important. And thank you for all that work and working with me so closely and mentoring me. So I'm going to use a little bit of a sports analogy, which is in baseball, you have what's called, rarely, you have what's called a five-tool player. Some people have one or two skills and qualities they have really great. Maybe three is pretty rare, but to be a five-tool player is huge. And I consider Dana a five-tool player in our realm. Number one, she has that work ethic that's unstoppable and deniable. She works as hard or harder than anybody we all know. And work ethic is huge. So I appreciate that, Dana. Number two, she's an intellectual. She, as somebody referenced earlier, she's always thinking through things very deeply, asking those great critical questions, giving great commentary to help bring everything together. There's a lot of strong intellect there. Number three, diplomatic, works well with others. I don't need to add more to that. We've been hearing all about that today. But yes, that's an important tool. And as somebody else said, not everybody has that skill either. So that's three, but we don't stop there.
Five tools.
You're very, what I call, practical because you have this institutional and historical knowledge of both CTA and STERS. You know how things work. You study that and you know that and you're ingrained in that. And you use that. And a lot of times, people don't remember their history or keep track of those details, those minute details that really matter, that we've all, things we've worked on. And you're always great at bringing up things that people have already done and accomplished and how that adds to what we're building. So that practicality and institutional knowledge is a skill. And then finally, it's passion. You've brought tears, many tears, to our eyes, honestly, through your tears. And that's all I think I need to say about your passion. And that's at least five tools. And there's probably more, as Jack said. We could probably put a scroll on the wall with many more, actually. But I'm going to go with those five. So I'm going to conclude by saying it's been a great joy just working with you. And we've all been enriched at a professional level, you know, to be associated with you and to some degrees on a personal level, too, as we're hearing. I want to just thank you for everything that I've just talked about. And you've impacted, truly impacted, so many lives, many, many lives, at all levels. And Dana, yes, you've impacted my life, too. Thank you, Dana. Thank you.
All right. And to kind of finish out our time, the board's going to have a chance. So I'll open it up to the board. But Harry and I and the board wanted to give you a little something. Harry, if you can join me. And you can, maybe Harry can explain what it is that we're presenting to you.
So these are notes, as Jack spoke about, from the staff on the presentation before. These are notes from Dana's colleagues on the board. And in the center, I think it says it all. Real heroes don't wear capes. They teach.
So we will open it up if there are board members that want to share any remarks.
Oh, we've already got this.
Yeah, almost. Yep, okay, perfect. Any other, any board members want to? I know that's, these are hard.
We did this amazing. Don't have to do this.
And I do want to open it up to staff as well. So if there are a few folks that want to comment as well. So joy.
I don't know that I have any words that could, anything that I say will repeat what many people have already said. And that alone says so much about you. Dana, you know, there's a term that people use for thinking about the course of your life and thinking not about the successes you take necessarily from your work or your professional career, but it's about your eulogy values. And when you are retiring or moving into your next chapter, you know, you can reflect on accomplishments you've had in the workplace, but what people are really going to remember are your character, you know, your empathy, your caring, your persistence. Again, a lot of the words that people have used. And, you know, that's what I've learned from you. Knowing you and observing you the last several years, I think has made me a better board member here. It's made me a better professional in the other work that I do outside of CalSTRS. It's made me a better person and it's made me a better mother. So thank you. I'll miss you.
I'm disappointed. I'm truly disappointed. I've only been here for six months and I've been embraced by a family. And you've been the mother. You have been the absolute best.
Thank you, Bill.
And I think that we live in a society today that is so divided and so at each other's throats. And here, we get together and we collaborate to do good. This is the best of public service.
Absolutely.
And teaching is at the absolute core of it all. And you've elevated me. You really have. Thank you.
I'm really glad this is on webcast, so I can watch it later. Watch it again. Kayle.
You know, long before I got to the privilege of sitting here, I learned about you, Dana, from the controller and her staff and this amazing legacy and person that you are. And then getting to sit here and learn that you can be so strong and so passionate and so real, I've honestly never seen a leader like that. And it has been a true privilege to learn how to do that and to be so real and have absolutely no ego in anything you do. And it is such an honor. And even though it's only been such a short amount of time, I will truly hold it. And more than anything, I hope that I can continue to learn from you because I have so much more to learn and I really hope this journey isn't over. And I'm very, very grateful. Thank you.
Karen.
I heard about Dana when the ballots for election would come out to be on the STERS board years ago. And I would see this name Dana Dillon all the time and that she was the incumbent and she was running again. And I didn't really know too much about her at that time. But I figured if the people that were in my school union supported her, then that was good enough for me. But, you know, and I felt bad that I didn't really know too much about her. Years went on. I taught, then I retired, and then the opportunity for me to be on this board as a retiree came upon. And as soon as I was appointed, Dana contacted me and said, welcome aboard. You know, you have, you have a lot of things that we need to do. We need to do it together. And anytime that you need me to help you, I'll be right there for you. And she was. And it's only been two and a half years that we've worked together. But from the time I've been on the board, you may not know all this stuff behind the scenes, but, you know, every time things would come up, she would always be there. When we would have board meetings, she would always make sure that we were all included in any activities after the board meeting, if we had dinner, if we did games or, you know, we even had a pool table game.
Yeah, we had a pool tournament.
Pool tournament. And so that was really a lot of fun. We had a lot of laughs. We had some winners. We had some losers also ran. But I mean, it was, it was really an inclusive thing, like Bill was saying, that we, we were able to work really hard, get a lot of knowledge, get a lot of information, and then pass it on to the board members, to the other members of our, of the organization, members retirees, families, beneficiaries. And she was always so, I guess the word I can say is like down-to-earth. I mean, she made things real for us and it made me want to work even harder. And I wanted to do my due diligence as a fiduciary. I wanted to do the best. I wanted to be better than her. But, you know, but I couldn't. I couldn't, no matter how hard I tried, you know? Because she's, she's, as everyone said, she's the one that everyone wants to emulate.
That's right.
And even though my time is short, I consider it, it's not the quantity of the time that you spend with anybody, it's the quality. And that she has done for me. And I'm sure I speak for the rest of the board members, for all of us. And so thank you very much, Dana.
Thank you. Karen, that was perfect.
Frank.
Well, Madam Chair, on behalf of the treasurer, Fiona Ma, she regrets not being here, but she couldn't get any more excuses from her jury duty. She exhausted it.
I've been there. I get that.
But she said, and she texted me last night because we were hoping that she will be here. She said, make sure you tell her, quote, "We still need you, your support, your advocacy, both the CalSTRS and beyond." And I think you already, somebody earlier said that they found, so thank you for your service. On a personal, on a personal note, I, too, like our colleague Bill, I'm disappointed because I didn't get to work as long. And I, but even in this short period of time, you made me feel totally welcome, totally like we have known each other forever. And I sincerely, I appreciate that welcome attitude, your counsel and your support. Congratulations and we'll see you on the road.
Yeah, I told Dana, I spoke to Dana privately last night and told her I probably wouldn't want to say, take up the time here, but kind of conveyed a superintendent's and CD's thanks to her. But I did want to say, perhaps on a personal note, that I thought that perhaps Dana's contribution to STERS is almost as fulfilling as her contributions of teaching and teaching our students. But noted that at the front end and the back end, that she's been taking care of Californians for a long time. But also, what is most impressive is not only the accomplishments that have been recognized by people, but perhaps the things that we don't know, that we'll never see, but that we sense that the things that she has done will have long-lasting effects that perhaps we won't be able to identify right now. And the greatest satisfaction sometimes is accepting the fact that you won't get recognized directly, but you did have an effect. And that is something that I think that, from all the comments here, from everyone and then, and from our board, from longstanding members to very short-time members, that it's testament to that, the effectiveness of what the single person can do. So I wanted to recognize that and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, so I won't disclose the nature of our text messages and the time of the day. Loretta was starting to go down a road that I was a little concerned about. We live in a different era, Loretta. But all kidding aside, you know, Dana's impact has not only been at CalSTRS here in the state of California, it's not only been in the United States, but because of her position, because of your leadership, she truly has had a global impact and has left a footprint on the retirement community across the globe. And very few people, very few people can say that. It's just a remarkable accomplishment and achievement. And, you know, the way I'm going to honor you going forward is I'm going to identify people who may not see something in them that they don't see in themselves, but I see in them. And I'm going to help them become the full, true person that they can be in honor of Dana Dillon. And I know, like my late father-in-law, I'll often find myself, I'll say, what would Russell have done? Often, it's around some other issues, not necessarily retirement. But I know, I know, I will find myself in thinking, what would Dana do? And that's, I mean, that doesn't get more impactful than that. And just in terms of leadership, there's nothing for me that's more impactful in a leader than someone that has an inquisitive mind and a compassionate heart and that actually creates change for the good. So your inquisitive mind and your compassionate heart, compassion and love is a strength. It is such a strength to lead with love and kindness. But that in and of itself is not enough. You have to have a sharp mind as well. And I can assure you, I can assure you, some of us know, you don't want to cross Dana. She's strategic and she'll, she's tough. She's tough. So don't cross her. But thank you, Dana. You've been a great colleague and you'll be a lifelong friend.
Absolutely.
And I love you.
I love you, too. Thank you.
Let me make a few comments and then I'll open it up to you guys.
I can't.
I know, I know. It'll, you know, it'll, hopefully, we'll move forward. But Dana, I just, I think so much has been said about you. I think role model is the phrase that keeps coming over and over again. And as Harry and I and Denise joins us in January, as we sort of continue on in leadership on this board, I think your voice is going to just continue to sort of be here in the oxygen. And we're going to continue to rely on the conversations and the interactions and the challenges that we've all kind of navigated together in the eight years I've been here. And I will say, public service is, it's the best thing in the world. It's one of the hardest things in the world. I know our staff understand that. All the challenges and procurement and blah, you know, just the barriers are in front of us at every turn, even this week. You know, there's just constant challenges and... And it can be really stressful and hard. And it's so enjoyable to navigate those waters with people I like, the people I love, people I respect, people I laugh with and drink with and tell stories to and confide in. And it's the most noble position to be in, to be stewards of the resources of California's teachers. It's an incredible honor. It's an incredible challenge. And it's just made so much more fun to do it with people that I just look up to, that I enjoy, that I can listen to country music with.
There you go.
Drink a beer with. And so I just, I thank you for that. Just, it's just been so fun to do, work on sexual harassment, to all the LGBTQ issues that you've been a champion of. And there are so many issues that people, when they start getting to know you, it's like you just open up this treasure trove of things about you that you're so passionate about, that you just model because it's who you are and what you do. It's just not, you don't sort of make a big deal about it. It's just like, I value these things. And I've appreciated that we've shared some of those values and tried to move the needle in some ways. I can't wait for next year and how we're going to get to continue to be colleagues and friends in different ways. And I hope you continue to hold us accountable and keep that high standard of us because we hear your voice and we want to rise to that level. And I just, I love you.
I love you, too.
You're an amazing person. So just not to lie. Is that what they said? Is it over? A tout à l'heure?
Until we see each other again.
Until we see each other again. And the words of Brooks and Dunn?
You'll always be loved by me.
All right. So Chris.
Thank you for the chance. Christopher Elman, Chief Investment Officer. This fund is coming up on 107 years old. And I think, you know, everybody here is recognizing this is a moment in history. Thinking back just to the 1970s, and you know these names, not a lot of people do, but Ruth de Prida, Emma Zink, Gary Lyons, and now Dana Dillon. To me, that's the CalSTRS Hall of Fame. So on behalf of the investment staff, thank you so much for your service. We have loved working for you and enjoyed it. Personally, I salute you and thank you so much and wish you the absolute best.
Dana, you know, you're my hero and I love you. But I'm going to say this from my official position. It's an intangible. So one of the things that is wonderful about working for this Board and this organization is the ethics. And the ethics that permeate throughout the organization, but they start at the top and they start with you. Larry Jensen and I were having a conversation yesterday about ethics and compliance, and we said, it's all about the culture. And you set the culture for the organization. And then you set it for the Board. And you set it. The 11 years I've been doing this, I talk to my colleagues around the country and they say, you won't believe what my Board did. And I said, my Board wouldn't do that. You wouldn't believe what people are doing. We wouldn't do that, STERS. So you really have set an ethical tone that is intangible, but it's throughout the organization. And the Board echoes that and amplifies that. It goes to our management staff. And it just, from my position, it just makes my job so much better and so much easier and gives us so much pride in the organization as how our culture is so different. And I really think that lays at your feet. So thank you.
Great. Okay. With that, I think we're going to take a five-minute break. Is that all right? Maybe 10 minutes? Do you want to? Yeah, let's go. Yeah.